Opened school committee meeting, Thursday, February sixth. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast and there are members of the local media available. If anyone would like to make an audio or video recording of the meeting, please let myself or one of the other school committee members know. First up, we have approval of minutes. We do have a set of regular meeting minutes from January sixteenth. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Motion from Joe. Second from Mike, all in favor? Unanimous in favor. Next, we have announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do any members have anything?
I would like to say that I had the opportunity to attend the kickoff for the hospitality and tourism program last Friday at the DoubleTree. It was very nice to see the culmination of a lot of people's efforts come together. The kids were there. It was a very nice program and kickoff of that program. So, again, I thank all those that were involved and look forward to hearing more about that as it gets going, so, it's good. I know you're probably gonna get to a little bit more of that later, Bob, but, do you have anything?
Just one announcement. This evening, I have actually correspondence from the Association of Schools and Colleges, which went up at the committee on January fourteenth. This is to Principal Angelini. The Committee on Public Elementary and Middle Schools, at its October meeting, reviewed the special progress of Fort Stacey Middle School and continued the school's accreditation. Just wanted to put that out publicly, that the school continues to be accredited, so all of our schools, pre-K through twelve, are currently accredited.
Yeah, great.
So, feather in Milford's cap.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. Just wanna say, you know, thank you to all the faculty and staff and certainly to our drivers of all the buses getting the kids to school safely today and with, without incidents, as I've heard. So, listen, I know it's no small, it's no, no small issue and, and really just a great credit to what, again, continued great partnerships we have throughout the town and glad the kids all made it to and home, to and from school safely today.
Yeah, all of us, including me included.
Yeah, and staff as well. It was not an easy drive, so, thank you.
Next up, we have invitation to speak. This evening, we do have our selectman, Bill Buckley, here this evening. Bill, welcome. Thanks for popping in, always good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the main purpose that I wanted to talk about this evening, the topic was basically where we, where we've come and over the last ten years or so. I think it was nine and a half years I sat at this table and spoke to some of you. I think Mike might have been the only member, I'm not sure if Christine was there at the time.
No, I don't think it was anyone.
All right. But nonetheless, it was the, it was an effort by the school, school administration and the school committee to form a committee and to look at the long-range educational needs of the district. So, as it turns out, that it was Representative Fernandez and myself, who were both not in office at that time, who worked with Lori Baranowski at the time, who called that first meeting and then asked us to chair, where we gathered a, a group of council members, general parents, educators, administrators, FinCom members, and we talked about what the educational needs were. That, that, that meeting was really born out of the, a proposal that had gone before town meeting and actually failed, and that was to add more grades and do some additional build out at Middle School East. So, when we, when we met as a committee, we talked about why that was and what our grade configuration needs were and what the educational needs were of the staff. There were a fair amount of staff members that were also on that committee. And it's basically taken us to where we are today. As you know, committees, many committees, since that report was put together, many school committees reaffirmed that educational plan through their statements of intent and so have the Board of Selectment throughout that process. There's been more continuity on the Board of Selectmen, but nonetheless, each, each school committee and members have come to their, their own conclusion, working, going forward, that this was the right educational plan. Just as a reminder, and I know I'm, to some degree, I'm talking, I'm talking in the mirror. That is, I'm talking to people who are dedicated to education, dedicated to the success of children and probably in the same position I'm in, and that is in amazement that the staff is able to accomplish as much as it can, given the current situation at Woodland. Not everybody may be aware of the fact that, and I know each of you know, that children are being taught in what was formerly custodial closets, kids are receiving occupational physical therapy in rooms that were never suited for that, children are being taught in the hallways. And it's, it's only through that hard work and dedication of the staff that that's able to, to continue. I, I don't think it ought to continue, and I think it's time that we take kids out of closets and give them back the time they deserve with the staff uninterrupted, without people going down the hallway and breaking into their educational time. They deserve more, the staff deserves more, and I know you feel that way as well. But I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that long-range plan briefly and say there are a couple of fundamental core pieces of that educational plan that were very important to those that were part of that committee. That committee voted on the educational plan that exists today and they voted unanimously. And when you get a, a group of that many people converging from different points of view and different walks of life and different thought processes to, to be unanimous, I think that alone speaks volumes for that educational plan. The core principles are that fifth grade belonged in elementary, that it didn't belong in a middle school setting, that it was important to let the kids be children, allowing them the opportunity, the same opportunities any other elementary school student might be provided in terms of recess and breaks and different things. The plan that many of you have today in terms of number of transitions and fifth grade being at Stacy is not necessarily one you designed, it's the one you inherited and you're working the best you can with it. But that was a strong desire of educators and parents to make sure the fifth grade no longer was part of that middle school setting and to put it back into the elementary school. The other piece was to see if there was an opportunity to remove the island called eighth grade and reduce one more transition, to have one less transition in the school district for kids to have to work through as they went through their, their educational progress, if you will. So, those were two big components of it, and I know there's been much said recently and a lot of great work done outside of this committee and even outside of the building committee in, in preparation for the town meeting Monday night. A lot's been discussed with regard to funding. I think what needs to be clear, at least for the community at large, is for those that aren't sure or have worries, that the current funding schedule has, if the sixty million dollars is approved, thirty-four of it is what we're planning on being the burden on the Milford, the town of Milford, that that will take a twelve and a half million dollar stabilization fund and take it down to nine point five million dollars. So, for folks that might be worried about our ability to fund and budget for other catastrophic events or major events, we certainly have that. Now, that's not the only funds available. Many of you are town meeting members or participate in town meeting, you know that in the last two years, we've also begun to fund a capital stabilization fund separate from that stabilization fund that currently has a balance of two point five million dollars. And that's not been talked about a great deal, I wanted to make sure that people knew that existed. Additionally, there, there are funds that, in the models that we've run from a, from a town perspective, and I should say we've run, our education, I mean, our financial team has run, that looked at the current method by which we conservatively fund government. So, for example, we apply, we regularly apply money to the tax rate to make sure that we're not on the levy limit and don't require and don't creep towards the need that you'll see and the requirements that you see in many districts, that if anything happens, they're quickly, they're quickly going to override your debt exclusion. So, within this model, this financial model that we've run, it also has an additional one point four million dollars to keep us off the levy capacity applied back to the tax rate. It has a host of things built into it and assumptions on our thirty-year bond that are conservative in our ability to go out. As you know, Milford is in a strong financial position and as a result, we receive favorable bond ratings. So, in, in each of the things that we've, we've looked at and talked about, we've been planning for this, we've actually been putting taxpayer money aside for this, and this is exactly what we've told the folks of Milford, the citizens of Milford, that we were preparing for, for the last ten years. So, I, I wanted to start where I began nine and a half years ago, and I wanted to take us to a point, at least in this discussion, where you should feel very comfortable of the finances that we've put together and the financial team has put together. You should feel, feel very comfortable with the building committee's design, and hopefully we can get to a point where we're now at that tipping point, right? We're now at that, at that point in this long life cycle of building, design, SBA or School Building Administration, funding that takes us to Monday night. I've been, I, personally, I found it very rewarding to be a part of that, and while it takes a long time, I think it will be worthwhile, and I think that the, that the students and staff and the general public will benefit greatly from, from what's been planned, what's being done, and hopefully what we can have constructed by, last, last date I heard was twenty sixteen, if everything works well. So, I don't know if there's any questions about the history of this, I don't know if that's helpful, but I don't know if anybody else had any.
Just a couple of words, if I may. First off, thank you, Bill, for coming and, and for speaking tonight.
My pleasure.
And, and also thank you to, to you and to Dino for, I had an opportunity on Monday to go and attend the, the Selectmen's meeting, and it was, you know, thank you for, for you and Dino, who is serving as, on our building committee as well for the Woodland School and, and your outspoken support in favor of the school, so we appreciate that. And, and really also thank you to you and the board for, I think you, we've continued to work well together, continued to kinda challenge each other to make sure that we really are doing the best for Milford, sharpening our pencil, making sure, all right, we say we can afford it, can we really afford it? And really, you know, what Monday night even helped for me, who's kinda had a, through the benefit of, in the, in the, of being on this committee, was really a front row seat to see what this looks like. It even helped me to see it even clearer and, and being able to see that, and I've kinda seen some of the behind the scenes, I'm, I'm confident that the, that the rest of the town in town meeting will feel the same. You know, I do look forward to seeing the plans that are put in place by the, by the governing board for what the future will be for Middle School East when we forward, when we're suc-, if, hopefully, in that we're successful in building a new Woodland School and, you know, we continue to follow through and follow the statute by law, which requires us to turn it over to the governing body of the town, which is you and the Board of Selectmen, look forward to seeing what those plans are. I know you'd mentioned on Monday of potentially putting together a task force on that. I'm, I know that that's something that would be a great and welcome, you know, we've always done great things by consensus. I think that'd be a great partnership for the schools if we were to form a subcommittee on that, if this were to be approved. I think that would be a great thing for this board to take, take into consideration and certainly look to join. I'd certainly love to be, have the opportunity to be a part of that if we're, if it is successful with getting the funding and the approvals on Monday. So, thank you to you and your board and, and really just, this is important, and I think you bring up a great point of, you know, we've, there's been a lot of people that have done a lot to get it to this point. There's been a lot of the building committee, the taxpayers of Milford, the residents of Milford, the, the children of Milford, and the educators of Milford. It's important that we move this forward and that we continue to do the right thing. The building that we have and the plans that are had, we talked about it at this meeting, we've talked about it at this board, the, the, some of the questions that we get and the concerns are about the size and the scope. Understand that what we gotta make sure that we're continuing to be very clear on is, the size and scope of the building is designed and mandated by the state. They start, in fact, actually talking with somebody who works very, very well in this and, and works a lot with this is, they literally take a student and design a building around it. So, it's, if we decide, oh, well, we're gonna go, I know that you tell us it's gotta be a hundred square feet per student and I'm making up numbers, this is fictitious, we're gonna go with fifty, the state won't approve the plan. And in which case, in our case, we'd be looking at, at, at really taking, taking away the funding of, and losing any level of reimbursement. So, we're looking at roughly fifty percent. Once again, Bill, thank you so much, and thank you to the, you know, to you and Dino for continuing to be outspoken supporters of the schools and look forward to seeing what the Board of Selectmen's, if this is successful, what the Board of Selectmen's decision will be with, with East and how we can certainly be, continue to be good partners and work, work forward together.
Mr. Chairman, if I might through you. Mr. Harrison brings up a, a great point, and it shouldn't be lost, and I, bothered by the fact that I omitted it. The Middle School East, that's a, a great point because our, our educational plan from two thousand four to now and the statements of interest all said the same thing. So, each of the committees that have looked at it, the Selectmen that have looked at, the FinCom that have looked at it, and we've built this financing structure and this, this building committee around, had with the understanding of that, the fact that eighth grade would no longer be used for eighth grade, that the middle, the Middle School East wouldn't house eighth graders. And whatever that building has in the future for Milford, I, I can tell you, I'm personally committed to making sure that's a useful building, whether it's municipal use, whether it's mixed use, or whether it reverts back to private hands and goes back on the tax rolls. I'm interested to see what committees such as the, Mr. Harrison was talking about, come forward with and discuss as proposals and to see where that committee comes with a recommendation. I'm interested in seeing that go forward. You know, historically, we've not been good with old buildings. So, if they're not reverted back to the tax roll, we've got to show a strong commitment as a community for a mixed use or municipal use. You know, I think if not for the Consigli family with that beautiful old high school granite building that was once on the middle school site, we would have, you know, the town's largest pigeon coop. And that was a shame for that building, and I'm, I'm happy to say I was a part of that happening. And we're very fortunate to have the Consigli family as committed to that building and the history and preserving that history and utilizing it. And if you've not taken a tour of that building, you ought to schedule one, you ought to see what they've done with that because it's, it's really a gem in Milford. So, I, I'm committed to that happening, I'm glad you brought that up, and I was remiss in not bringing that up. We're going to do something with it, but as you said, through state statute, through the, through mass law, when a building goes surplus within a school department, it reverts back to the Selectmen to form a committee and to decide what its use is going to be. I see us doing the right thing, and I'm not sure what that is yet, but I see that being a group of people bringing together a lot of different ideas and seeing how that works.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, for the public, can you remember the best you can off the top of the, who was on the long-range committee?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, as a matter of fact, the continuity is, is interesting because Bob Tremblay was on it, so.
Who's he again?
Actually, Aldo Chakey was on it. You know what, and I can't for the life of me, I don't have that document in front of me, but there, there were many educators, there were many council members. And the council members-
Yeah, my father was actually on it.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, Dean Harrison was on there. Just thinking back, who else was on the-
All right, that makes me feel old.
Paul Amaloo, I think, from Memorial-
When school committee members' fathers were on it, that's interesting. You know, I had, I had-
Not to put you on the spot, I just-
I had black hair, by the way, the last time I presented here, so.
I as well was able to attend the Selectmen's meeting on, on Monday night, and I felt very, very, very comfortable coming out of that room about the Woodland School project, but I, I reached out to the superintendent the following day. The one thing that I felt very uncomfortable about was exactly what Mr. Harrison just spoke about is, what is the school committee gonna do with that building? And I said to Bob, I said, if we're lucky enough Monday night to get the funding and the zoning change, the school committee needs to set up a subcommittee right away and start working on plans, because the school's not gonna be finished till sixteen.
Sixteen.
That gives us plenty of time to put together some ideas, work together with the Board of Selectmen and say, you know, we're, we're moving forward with this, here are some ideas, but, you know, we're not just gonna walk away one day, lock the door, and hand you the key and say, spend a nice ride.
No, no, and I see you definitely being a part of that because whatever potential for mixed use there might be, there may be an educational component. So, a, as you know, the SBA has funded portions of renovation of that building in the past. And so, if there is an educational component, less of that, they may be interested in clawing back some of the funds. It was the right thing to do in funding and reimbursing, seeking reimbursement for the heat and the roof of that building. You have to be able to continue with education. Kids need to be warm, staff needs to be warm, and we need to know that it's not raining on their heads, but beyond that, if there's a portion of that that's educational, that, that may go a long way with SBA, and, and if it's not, if it reverts back to non-municipal or private sector use, the assumption, I guess, that one could make from that is, there, there's a selling price for that and then there's the continued tax, tax base that that would provide. Frankly, personally, I can see a lot of different scenarios. Somebody had mentioned Draper, Draper Building, and if you look at the administrative Draper Building, that's a long-term healthcare facility. If you look at what, what a elementary school once was in Hope Dale and look at the beautiful condos that exist there today, that's an incredible transition from a public use to a, to a private use. So, I, I look at it and say, all things are possible.
Yeah, definitely, and that's why I think, that's very important, and I'm glad you brought that up as well this evening, is that I think, you know, the school committee should, you know, should be involved in that.
Sure, absolutely.
Collaboratively together, because everything else that was discussed in that meeting that night, you know, with the town accountant, Mark Shane from the Finance Committee, Paul Armandons of the Board of Selectmen, it, it was very positive and, and it was very, very well done, you know, so, again, thank you for that.
No, we have a, as you, as you do within your staff, we've talked about some remarkable people doing some great things with kids. We're also fortunate to have the right people in the right place to be able to, to look at the financing and keep us in the space that we're in, not in, we look around us, you know, there are towns around us who aren't capable of funding a town administrator, a library, they're not able to go forward with their public safety buildings, you know, Midway had some trouble with libraries as an example recently in the past. So, we've been very, very fortunate, and, you know, I think the, the final leap that we need to make is getting, getting the, more of the community and specifically the town meeting members to see what we see, to know what we know, and to, to let them know what our, our educators and our children and their grandchildren or children are going through. Because I'll tell you, I'll share with you, my biggest fear out of this is, if it doesn't pass, I'm concerned with sending Milford dollars out of the district. We've got this so much in the forefront of everyone, everyone's mind today, that I'm concerned that future parents are gonna choice out and say, you know what, the town had an opportunity to do something, they chose not to, now I'm gonna make my decisions with my feet. They're committed to their children's educational success and that, that's gonna be part of their thought process. The other thing that I've not heard a lot talked about, but any reasonable person can make some assumptions, if this doesn't pass, you know, the current situation can't continue.
Right.
And there's no reason to penalize, you know, people have said many times, you, you get one shot at third grade, you get one shot at fourth grade, you get one shot at fifth grade, and we're impacting such a large portion of the children's education that when you only get one shot, as much as we have magnificent, magnificent, magnificent staff helping the children and doing everything they can, it's, it's, it's too much to, to ask to have that continue in my mind. So, you know, not being on the school committee, but being a reasonable person and having served on the school committee, you know, one could easily imagine an awful lot of trailers and portables on the existing field anyway, because what exists today is just not something that can continue.
And I'll just add to what Bill said that I, this, this timely now, I was gonna say it later, is that it's not a matter of, this is a fun, a good idea, a nice thing to do. We're at a critical juncture. We just do not have the capacity to teach kids the right way there. It's not, when, we, we are going to have to get some sources to make that school better and more efficient, whether we build a new school now or have multiple portables. There, there's nowhere to put kids anymore. We have to service children appropriately and well, and it's not about bells and whistles. It's about doing the right thing so that our kids are delivered the education, all kids, whatever you need in the right way possible. And Woodland can't support our community anymore, it just can't. So, I'm hoping that people see that, that town meeting members see that and go out and vote and do the right thing by our community and our town, because we'll have to come forward another way. If not now, it'll be next year, it'll be the year after. It's just at that point at Woodland.
And that, if that's not passed, that's a great point, because if it doesn't pass, we'll get in the back of the line for reimbursement. We'll have to redo an educational plan and we'll have to do the things that we started in two thousand four and likely take approximately the same amount of time. If that happens, the scenario that you just posed will be completely on Milford's dime without reimbursement, and that's important to note as well. Something's going to happen there, and if there are opponents out there, if it isn't this, a reasonable person could ask, then what? And if the then what is, the types of scenarios we're talking about now, the financial hit and the things that they may not like about this plan certainly don't exist with the, or are greater, right? The, the damage is greater in a, in a scenario without SBA reimbursement.
I, I think an important point that's being made, you know, by, by many people, I think, as well, is, is that understand that the reason for the decisions and why the building is right now is because of all the work that's been done. Now, realize, this is not the long-range plan, and we've not gone to adding all of these portables for two reasons. One, we felt as though when we were continuing on with this being a temporary situation and reviewing it that way, as well as continuing to make sure that we're staying on track, staying on plan and, and not overspending tax dollars on buying and covering an entire field with, with portables. I, I mean, I can tell you, if, if for some reason, and I hope this never happens, that we never have to make that decision of what is Plan B, and I've had that question a couple of times, what is Plan B if this were to be voted down on Monday? If we were to have to do that, we have to come up with a different plan, and the plan is not to continue on with Woodland as it is. We gotta get a stage back. We're getting kids out of closets, we're getting kids out of janitors' rooms, they can't keep teaching in hallways, and yeah, we're gonna go have to go out and spend some very significant money on, and I don't know what the cost is off the top of my head, Kathy, you might, what is the cost for, for one of the, for one portable? And we're probably gonna need ten, if not more.
The four portables were two hundred and fifty thousand.
So, for every four, it's a quarter of a million dollars. We're talking about probably needing in excess of eight to ten. So, now we're talking about, again, we're back in the millions of dollars with no reimbursement, and again, those are not thirty- to forty-year buildings, they're five-year buildings.
Right, the interesting part about tho- those numbers is, it actually does the exact same thing as the current plan to the stabilization fund. Takes it right off the top, takes it down to nine, eight million dollars, but it doesn't get the useful life and the, the use that the kids should get from it, the staff should get from it.
And we'll have to replace them at least twice during the ten-year period it would take us to get back to the same point again. So, we're talking about double spending the money, double spending taxpayers, dipping into that stabilization account. So, I, I, I hope that we never have to come, I hope, I'm really hoping that we don't have to come up with, that we don't have to see Plan B out to, out to fruition.
Right. You know, and, and we know as part of the feasibility study as well, that, you know, e- even renovations and addition, I mean, is gonna cost more money than it is to build the, the school that's being proposed now. I mean, is gonna cost sig- more money than it is to build the, the school that's being proposed now. So, yeah, all, all very good points.
I just wanna underscore some of the things that have been said tonight, thank you very much for, for coming out. Um, and as you mentioned, uh, you know, there's been a lot of work that's done to bring us to this point, and we're very grateful for, for all that work that's been done. And the building committee that's been put together, um, under the leadership of, of Aldo and Jonathan have done an amazing job over the last, you know, twelve to fifteen months working on this project, and it's a very experienced group that's worked on other school projects in the past. Um, they're very conservative with the, the processes, they, they went through and reviewed all the different options, and they firmly believe that this is the best plan for the school district and for the, the, the community. So, um, you know, the, the decision's now in the hands of the town meeting members, and we had an open house last week and, um, you know, very happy, I was very happy to see nearly forty town meeting members show up and, and take a tour of the facility, and anyone that's been in that building knows just how much we need a, a new school, um, you know, there's, there's no question about that, right? Um, so, you know, I, I, if any town meeting members are watching tonight, I hope that they make it a priority to show up Monday night. Um, and, you know, you could, you can get bogged down in the details and second guessing some, some of the decisions that have been made throughout this process. Um, or you can stand with us, support the project, and, you know, send a very clear message that this community, um, is willing to make the necessary investments to improve education in, in the town of Milford, uh, and ultimately strengthen the community as a whole, so.
Well played.
Bill, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And, uh, Christine, it's us, it's sor- I'm sorry personally to see, uh, you, uh, leave, I understand how hard it is having served as well. It's a great demand, but, uh, you brought a lot to the table, and I'd say the same thing, Rob, it's in your future, I'm not sure where that's going, but, I had heard that on the radio the other day, so I wanted to make sure I said that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support, Bill.
Thanks so much, Bill.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have, uh, the Milford High School Athletic Director, Rich, um, here to talk about the expansion of the athletics to the middle school level. Thanks for coming in, Rich.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Um, one of my new, uh, initiatives, well, it's actually not new, it's been, um, it's been proposed several times, but I think the timing is, is right, and, and, and Bob and Kathy, uh, felt that it was as well, was to expand our programs to the, to the middle school level. Um, we would, uh, I would like to start small, uh, with one program, um, have, not, not knowing, uh, you know, wh- what, what that would, what that would be in terms of like, say, a winter sport with gym space or, or other issues. Um, my proposal would be to ha- to add boys and girls' middle school soccer. It, it would appear, uh, that logistically would be the easiest sport to add, um, using the Fino Field Annex and Fino Field itself as practice and playing facilities. Uh, proximity to East and Stacy, um, would make it easy for students to get there for practice. Um, I believe it's something that could in, eventually enhance a- all our programs at the high school level. I, uh, I believe in the edu- the educational athletic model, that, um, education, uh, athletics are as much a part of, uh, child's education if they participate than, than, uh, than the classroom, so. Uh, what a comprehensive program may look in the future, uh, you know, maybe running sports, eventually maybe basketball and so forth. In meeting with, uh, Nancy Angelini the other day and, and Noah, uh, and talking about, you know, beyond soccer, uh, we realized that some sports would be very difficult at the middle level, uh, football would be one. Baseball with the lack of space would be very difficult. So, with boys and girls' soccer, it gives us at least a jumping off point. Uh, they, they support the idea, um, and I think it's something that, um, could help us in the future here at the high school.
Chairman, um, Richie, thanks for coming tonight. Um, how does this connect, um, I, first and foremost, I, I am in favor of adding an, an athletic program to the middle schools. I, I think it's a good way to do it, I think it's one of the things as a, as a father to a, a soon-to-be middle school child and a current middle school child, uh, the more activities we can keep them involved in that keeps them invol- engaged with schools is fantastic. How do you view this, um, and what work have you done to work with either Milford, uh, Hope Dale Youth Soccer, um, to kind of understand what that overlap would be from either from a season perspective? Are we, do we now turn into a competitor for, are we competing for the same kids for participation, or do we work in concert with them?
Well, I, I, I talked to, to Paul Brazza at length, um, a couple of months back, and, um, in talking to other athletic directors who have junior high school soccer, other sports. And for the most part, a, a middle school program isn't set up like a high school program with the amount of contests and practices a week, it's after school. Um, it's not, um, it's intense in that the schedule's about half, and the practices are roughly a little bit more than half. Uh, Paul didn't seem to think it would affect numbers, but it would, it would be an option. You, you have kids currently in, in the Hockamok League that we're currently in, uh, and I'll use basketball as an example, cause I had a recent conversation, that some will play on the middle school team and some will continue to play travel, some won't, some will do one or the other. It becomes a personal choice, uh, we don't wanna overburden families, we don't wanna overuse student athletes, uh, you know, the, the rate of injury at that age level is, is skyrocketing with the amount of overuse between AAU, club, et cetera, et cetera. But i- it's, it's a nice option, um, we certainly don't wanna hurt the youth program, but at the same time, you know, the, the, the things that middle schoolers will learn in a, in a, in a middle school program, a junior high program, uh, will help prepare them when they get here, they don't always have that preparation. You, you have a, you have a, hopefully an educator coach who's instilling the things that are important when they get here, like a- academic progress, and there's a certain minimum that you have to achieve to continue to be eligible, I know it won't affect every student, uh, at the middle school, you know, forty maybe max, but there's a trickle down, the word gets out, you know, so-and-so isn't playing because they didn't have the grades or so, things like that. Um, that there are, the other things are important, uh, winning certainly is important, there's, there's no doubt, but n- not at the expense of what we believe as educators to be, to be those core values, sportsmanship, et cetera. Um, so I get the sense from Paul in, in that, you know, it can serve to enhance his program, um, the, the two, besides the fact that it's the same sport, should have very little connection, I would, I would say, overall.
Okay. Christine, oh, sorry, so ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, just, um, just one more, one more if I may. Um, are there any current MIA rules, um, that would prohibit and or limit the, the number of practices? I, I seem to remember at some point, there was a limit as far as for outside, it's participating in outside sports. So if I, as an example, if I have a student who is playing Milford Hope Dale Youth Soccer and has practice on Tuesday from five to seven, um, I couldn't have practiced also at the school from three to five.
Um, the, the actual rule, uh, bona fide team member rule is that you cannot miss a school practice contest for your club in-town practice or contest, you can do both, but you, you have to commit to the school. Uh, middle school athletics are governed by the MSSA, which is, which is the principal's organization, uh, similar to that of cheerleading. It's, it's not governed by the MIA, it's a, a different organization, the, the rules are basically the same. Um, but, uh, as far as, you know, those decisions become, uh, family decisions, you know, and, and, and those of us that have kids that play multiple sports and, you know, you tend to listen too much, uh, to the parent whose kid is in, you know, fi- on five different AAU teams and this and that, you, you get, you, your head starts to spin. I, I look at this as separate, as something that's a, that's a foundation for the high school program, and taking into consideration all those things that, that, that we value in, uh, high school athletics beyond the winning part, which we love to win, but not at the expense of things that we know are important.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, okay, last one, Jane, is that, uh, the schools that, that, that the middle school would play, is there a separate middle school league? Or do they play the same towns that say the high school league, is it a middle school league for our high school league?
Well, the, the, the league that I, that I, I'm looking at right now, the, uh, the Hockamok League, I think only has a handful of middle school teams, in fact, uh, probably, um, maybe two or three schools. There is a league, it's called, it's a combination of Bay State League schools and Tri Valley League schools, it's called the Bay Valley League, and it's put together by, uh, the ADs in and around there, the Hopkinton is one, Holliston, uh, I think Millis, and then you go to Wayland, Weston. And it's, again, a combination of both of those leagues, and they ha- and it's established, there's a schedule, I think Earthline's in there, but of course, they only have girls. Um, so, um, there, there is a league set up, it's middle school soccer, it seems li- close enough, travel-wise, they play back-to-back boys, girls, girls, boys. Although if, if, if that didn't work out, which I think will, in my conversations with, with some of the athletic directors there, um, I'd be, I'd be able to put together a, kind of a, a, a non-league schedule, we're only talking ten, twelve games, max. And with the, the, the schools in and around us in and the Hockamok League, um, like, uh, so- some of the JV teams in the Dual Valley, for instance, are really junior high teams, uh, the Douglas's or the Hope Dales, you know, we could, we could be competitive with them, so I'd be able to put together a schedule.
And then are, we would take the buses just like the high schoolers, the kids would go together as a team, boys and girls, or however you wanna transport.
Yes. Yes, boys and girls together, yes.
Um, and to Scott's point, Hope Dale already, a lot of the, um, students that play travel play Hope Dale High School. So, and they're able to do both, so I think it truly is a family decision, um, how much you want to make yourself crazy or not. Um, I, but I think you can do both, but I don't, I hope it doesn't affect the travel program. Um, the way youth sports are going now, I think it starts shrinking by sixth, seventh and eighth grade anyways, and so then at that point, it's the sport of choice, um, that you end up getting. My next question is, what do you envision for growing it, and if we grow a middle school program, as a school committee member, I have concerns about, um, being able to budget and support it forward, you don't wanna start something and then not be able to keep putting, uh, your money where your mouth is and back that program up, and, and back it up in a way that we can grow, so that soccer isn't the only sport. But my other question really is, how do we envision, is this a, a athletic director of the high school program? So you, in your capacity, these, if we grow these programs, can your capacity as a high school athletic director take care of these programs? Or is it a community, we grow it, we build it, and then is it a community use program? I, I don't know, but I think that question needs to be answered for people.
Well, I, I would, I would do whatever, um, it takes to get this done, you know, whether it's, it's me or, or someone else. I, I, um, you know, I, I feel like I'm a, a district athletic director anyway, we've had middle school athletics, uh, we've had eighth grade waivers and cross-country, uh, ice hockey, field hockey, so, um, but I, I, I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, so that as a, as a high school athletic director, you can manage this under your.
I would do my best, I would, I, I might have, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not afraid to work hard and, and, and do right by student athletes. Um, how could, how, how does it evolve and, and what does that mean for me? Um, I guess those are conversations I'd have with, with, with Bob and Kathy.
Yep.
Say, listen, I, I've been home for an hour in the last three weeks, can, can you get me some help or, or what have you? I, I, I just feel that, uh, that the time is right for, to, to at least get started. Where I see it growing, the running sports, uh, cross-country, track, those aren't real costly, uh, in terms of uniforms and, 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 and things like that. The only concerns with cross-country is we don't have a trail, our kids are on the street. Our, our cross-country coach, Deb Sanzon, has done a fantastic job creating a course that, that doesn't have us on Highland Street as, as much as it has in the past, just to keep everything kinda, we go through twice on campus. Um, so I would have concerns about sixth, seventh and eighth graders running the S-curve. Um, you know, maybe our friends in Hope Dale can help us with the Parklands or, or something. Track is, you know, we have that, that track is fantastic, I know Nancy has done track, uh,
Yeah, they have a good after-school program.
Like a, a nice after-school program. Can, can we, can we enhance that by having it competitive and having some meets against other schools? Um, again, it doesn't have to be six like we have in high school, maybe it's a couple. Um, you know, and, and, and then go from there, basketball is something that, you know, I think if, if, if we do have the new school and, and we're able to keep the gym at East, that becomes a little bit easier. If that doesn't happen, that, that, that would be really hard, um, to, to kinda have enough practice and space for two additional teams. Um, like I said, baseball would be impossible, there's only three diamonds in town, and we have freshman JV and varsity. Softball, we could utilize planes, there are other ways, you know, softball, you can play anywhere, you just need some space, not a lot of space. Um, lacrosse, I don't believe there's a, there is junior high lacrosse, you know, there are some sports that aren't represented at the junior high level, like volleyball really isn't, doesn't have junior high. Um, field hockey is, is kind of, the, the powerhouses in field hockey are junior, senior high schools, so they have seventh and eighth graders playing JV. So, I don't think it's gonna mirror what we have in high school, sport by sport, but I think, you know, three, four sports across gender i- is, is possible.
So, do these students pay a fee like the high schoolers, and they follow like the athletic handbook like the high schoolers, and then is the school, could we have to look at the fee schedule like the high school, you know?
Well, I, I would look at having the fee, you know, uh, similar to the, what the high school, um, kids are paying. Nancy and, and Noah and I discussed, um, certain standards for eligibility and, and, and we were talking about maybe making them a little stricter than ours.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we have the option, every district has the option of taking the MIA standard and making it more difficult, you can't go below the standard. Um, you know, um, you know, w- we would like it a mini version of, of what we do in high school, is preparation.
Yeah.
The, the, the thing that the kids have to get used to in that transition is, uh, that there are academic standards, and our kids do really well, athletes. I was, I was putting, crunching the numbers today, and our, um, you know, seventy-two percent of the high honor roll students in Milford High School are student athletes. Seventy-one percent of the honor roll students are student athletes. You know, uh, eh, looking at academic eligibility and NEX two is a great tool for that. Um, point zero two percent of all students at Milford High School who would be academically ineligible are student athletes. Point zero two percent of all the kids it would be, so I think the vast majority of our, of our kids that play sports know that they, there's a standard, that they have to, i- i- in, in, to some kids fall through the cracks unfortunately, yes, and that's, that's the worst conversation to have. Um, but, you know, the, the, am I answering your question, by the way?
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I'm a proponent of that, I just, there's a lot of information that people will ask that you wanna get out there, and you wanna build the support from the community, from the families whose kids will be playing now.
Right.
You want it to be, this is a, this is what we're going for, and that information out there, so there's no questions.
Well, starting slow with one sport, two genders, helps the, helps us answer those questions as, as we go forward, instead of jumping in, okay, let's do it in this fall, winter and spring. I think we have a pretty good handle on, on how we want it to look, but I'm sure there are things that, that might come up that we're not, uh, necessarily prepared for. I don't know what that would be, but, um, but if we start slow, I get, it's our best chance to be successful.
Mm-hmm, I think it's a great idea. One more question, have you ever taken a poll of the students in middle school or the travel program from Milford to see how much interest you have? So, you have to have tryouts, how many ca- you know, like what are we, I'm curious to see that, when people know all their information, how many kids try?
No, I've, I've never had a poll for middle school kids.
Or their families.
Or their families.
Paul could do that, through the travel program, it would be an easy one, so.
Mike. I'm actually also Mr. Chairman, I get my questions answered.
Sorry, sorry.
So, no, that's fine.
I only have a few meetings left, I gotta get it all.
No, that's fine, I'm all set, thank you.
Just, uh, some of your questions kinda started my head spinning a little bit. Couple of things that, uh, with regards to the cost to the parents, you mentioned that it'd be a, a shortened season by comparison to the high school?
Well, it'll, it'll, competition-wise, there won't be as many games, but,
Right.
you know, uh, we would still look at a practice schedule that's similar to a JV or a freshman team.
I, the reason why I ask is just kinda thinking through in my head of something that, and I think it's way too early to have that conversation, but something I, as, as you start to put pen to paper on what that cost looks like, I, I would just ask you to be cognizant of what is the impact? I, I would just ask you to be cognizant of what is the impact from a family perspective? As well as kind of what's the return on the investment? Cause they're going to look at games played in a lot of cases. Just having talked to a lot of parents, they're going to look at and go, well, wait a second, I'm spending X number of dollars for fifteen games at the high school, and I'm spending the same amount of money for eight games in the middle school. Why am I spending just as much money for not as many games? So, just, it's not something you need to ask, answer now. I'm just something I would think about. Um, the other piece that I would guess I would just ask that this committee really give some thought to, and I think it's some of the things that Christine was touching on and Richie was touching on, which is, as you said, you already sort of feel like a district athletic director. Does it make sense for, um, us to continue to look at, and I know I brought it up before of if we introduced, if we did introduce this, does it make sense from a reporting perspective, if we introduce this, to have you continue reporting to the high school principal? When now you may have to ask, we may now be asking Kerry at some point to be getting involved or answering questions from middle school parents about middle school parents. Does it make sense of just saying, hey, listen, it's, you're now a district, uh, it's now a district position? And, and at least look at whether, what that makes sense of as far as from a reporting structure. So. So, just, it's not something we have to answer now, but something that I would ask that we engage in a further conversation at some point down the line. Um, as we get closer to this, um, wh- what is it, what makes sense?
Yeah, so I just had two, two, uh, questions or, or, or points, um, and, and also just to reinforce Christine, Christine's comment about the expense as well. So, as we grow the program, obviously we need to be sensitive to the, the expense of it. Um, I think the soccer program really wasn't going to cost us all that much, right? After all was said and done, it was around three or four thousand dollars. Um, so that, that's obviously manageable, but as we add all the sports and that number starts to add up, we need to be, uh, sensitive to that because it's, it's something that we don't want to take away four years down the road or five years down the road if the costs get too expensive. But I, I know there's a lot of debate out there between, um, having interscholastic sports and intramural sports at the, at the middle school level. Uh, and there certainly benefits to, to both. Um, you know, one of the concerns that, that I have when I, when I first saw the program was the fact that it would, um, it would only benefit, I think, twenty boys and, and twenty girls. Um, so I, I think the plan is to have, potentially have cuts for the program. You'd have to.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, things that I talked to Nancy and, and Noah about, um, how, how is that going to look? How we, you know, how are we going to do this? Is we going to give preference to eighth graders over seventh graders? And, and that's a good, healthy debate and, and, um, um, yeah, I, 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 you know, if you have thirty kids come out, it's, it's, it's kind of hard to have a team of thirty.
Right.
So, uh, I would say twenty would be the max, so that we would have to have cuts. How that, you know, for me, you, you, you would pick the best twenty players. And again, that's very subjective, and I know how emotional that kind of conversation can be, but that's, um, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah. And we, when you look at the, the expense side of it, um, through an intramural program, you, you could probably reach a lot more students. Um, that could potentially benefit from, um, playing different sports, you can off, you can offer a lot more, more programs. So, uh, in terms of, you know, the return on investment, it seems like building up the intramural program might make more sense than bringing in an interscholastic program, but we can certainly, I mean, we can certainly look at both options and debate the, the pros and, and cons. Um, and then the, the, the other question was with the Woodland School project, we'd be closing Middle East, moving eighth grade over to Stacy. So, would it make sense to wait until that project's done and then roll out the program? Or do we just roll out the program next year and be, and be done with it? Um, so I don't know.
I say go with the momentum we have. We're there, we're all in accord.
Yeah, right. I, I would agree. Yeah.
It's a, it's a good thing. It's a good time to try it.
It's a si- it's a single principal that runs both buildings.
Yeah, it's a good time to try it, with the space and the time and the energy. It's a good idea.
Yeah, Rich, uh, you know, I'm certainly in, in favor as well as, you know, expanding this program down into the middle school levels. Um, you know, to keep the kids busy and, and, and to prepare them as well, you know, for their high school experience. Um, of course, you know, like I think just what everyone has said, I'd be concerned with the costs involved. Um, in addition, um, what I've come to learn the last couple of years, it's been somewhat challenging finding educators within our system who want to coach. Um, so have you looked into that and do you know if there's interest out there? I- 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 and, and I ask because I think that is an important part of what you're trying to do here as opposed to it being a, you know, mom and dad coached type of thing, you know, at that level. So, so do you have interest there and?
Well, I, I haven't solicited, solicited interest, but there is some, uh, well, th- there's one teacher in particular, it's Stacy, that I had in mind and that I know has the background and, um, you know, I, I would hope, you know, be t- i- in, in all our schools, down from Memorial all the way through the high school, that we should be able to find, uh, someone that, two people that are willing to, to coach, you know, junior high school soccer. I would, I would hope. Am I concerned? Yeah, that's always a concern. You know, the, the pool of applicants isn't big for, for most jobs. It's usually very small. In fact, we have some spring positions that are still open with, with no applicants. And we're kind of, you know, kicking the garbage cans and asking around for people within the district to, you know, to kind of step up. So, it, it does work best.
Mm-hmm.
Um, i- i- you know, it does work best when you have somebody that sees the kids, if not sees the kids in the building, um, is, is with kids during the day as a teacher.
Right. Right.
And then, uh, kind of takes it over in the afternoon, kind of an extension of the classroom, cause it really is, um, just different tools. So, um, I, I'm hoping we have enough young educators in town that we have a, and everyone played soccer. Seems like most people played soccer, so, um, hopefully when the, the word gets out, we'll, we'll get some phone calls.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and, and I would hope that you would too, again, just, you know, an area where I think, you know, it's something you want to take a look at sooner than later. Um, you know, and then, you know, to Christine's earlier point too, you know, managing, from a management perspective of overseeing all of this, um, you know, I want to make sure that you, you'd be comfortable and, you know, what might be involved in, in doing that so that, you know, you're not stretched in and the program's not stretched in. Again, the kids and the coaches, they, they need to be supported in these programs. Um, they need to be evaluated, they need to be, um, y- y- you know, helped out and helped along. And, uh, you know, that, it's already a lot for one person to do, so, um, again, not so much a question as, you know, that, that's something that, you know, I think needs a, a lot more thought probably put into it.
I, 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 I hear you. And, um, you know, I, I talk to my coaches on a daily basis, most of them. Um, and, you know, it, it's, it's not always easy to, to manage, you know, an athletic program because of the nature of athletics.
Right.
Uh, it's not black and white. Um, so all I can promise you is that I'll, I'll continue to do my best in support our staff and student athletes, similar to what I do. You know, what I've done since I've been here for the last five and a half years, and that's, uh, giving everything I got and making honest judgments and, and, uh, and, and really, uh, put the kids first in all those judgments. So, um, I'll continue to do my best.
Good. I know you will.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Good evening.
Great job.
Uh, next up, report of the superintendent of schools, Bob.
Um, so item A, Woodland School Building Project, it was great that, uh, Bill could stop by this evening and, and really he gave us a great update. And, um, just a couple of points I want to add to that, and, and it follows what Scott had said earlier as well about the square footage comment you made about Woodland School. And I want to just, uh, comment a little bit further on that. Um, there's been some perception that where the school is being overbuilt, or it's luxurious, or it's grand, or whatever the, whatever the adjective is out there. Uh, I think it's important for the public to know that these schools, to match to Scott's point, are, there's a very, uh, simple formula the Massachusetts School Building Authority uses, the grid, and you plug in the design enrollment. And by the way, the Massachusetts School Building Authority tells us that number, um, based on the enrollment of the town, based on housing data, birth rate data, it's all factored into an equation that in this spreadsheet populates the number of classrooms you need, whether there are music, uh, then the amount of physical education space, whether it's one station, two stations, three stations, the size of the cafeteria, all of that is, is a function of this in-house assessment the MSBA has designed. So, for anyone who might think that we're overbuilding the school, um, I want to be emphatic to say that is not the case. In fact, the Massachusetts School Building Authority would not subscribe to our project if that were the case. They, we follow their regulations in sizing, uh, and this is what they've spec, that was they've specked out for us. I want to just put to, to, to bed any concerns there about this, I don't know, being a, a grand school of some magnitude. It's, it's new, it's, it's grand in that regard, but it's not oversized and it's not, um, overly superfluous as some people might want to call it. That's one point I want to make. The other point I want to make about, you know, in the, um, if this project were not, uh, to pass, and I want to be optimistic that it will on Monday evening, um, we made a commitment some years back, as members of this committee may recall, um, with families who were, uh, in our partnership with NECA at the time, the, the New England Center for Children. And those families, we met in my office at length, you know, we had meetings with the school committee here, uh, for children with special needs, all these children who are, uh, on the autism spectrum, um, to have programs in-house. We've delivered on that promise as a school district, done very, very well. In fact, Milford has become attractive in many regards, uh, for families because we service our students in this community, uh, with their peers. The exception to that, however, is Woodland School. So, the law provides for a forty-eight month window or latitude where a student would be with their peers or within forty-eight months of the, of their age appropriate peers. Um, so we were able to accommodate that by having students who would normally go to Woodland School in grade three, remain at Brookside or Memorial School, depending on their need, and then in grade four would go to Stacy Middle School because it still falls within that, 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 um, provision. So, they basically avoid Woodland School. That's not right.
Hmm.
It's just not right for this community. So, if this project is, this is, uh, for a number of reasons fails, we have a serious problem that we get to address. Uh, and we're putting portables, uh, and I get that point loud and clear, on the fields there, um, you're getting kids there's one, but we can't just send kids there with these special needs, uh, for, one, it's not right, two, it's illegal. Uh, and I'm deeply concerned that, um, people may not be aware of that, that we have, we're, we're compliant with the law, but I, in my view of this as superintendent, we are not doing our, our, uh, we're doing this service to kids when we can't put them with their age appropriate peers in the same house. And that's got to be fixed.
Hmm.
So, I want to just be on record for those two very important comments, uh, that might be out there in public perception. People may not have thought of that, or people may not have, um, realized that. So, those are the two points I want to add. I know we've talked an awful lot over the, over the, um, I have had so many conversations about Woodland School. I don't even know who have I said to what, um, uh, in, in every day, but it's really important that the town meeting members come out. And if they, we've had about thirty-seven, I think, Joe, of town meeting members that came to the open house. And, uh, you know, we've reached out to certain members and we have, uh, at the town hall tomorrow, there'll be, uh, you know, some of the designs that will be on display there, and we have a PowerPoint presentation, um, we, we set up the screens and everything today to make sure that it works to explain all this to town meeting members. Um, and I think it's just, it's an exciting time, and I really hope the town does the right thing on this project, so, just my comments on, on the item. Is there any questions that anyone had? I, I can't imagine we haven't talked about everything there is about Woodland School, but in case there's anything else out there before Monday.
All right, this.
About how it's been covered.
All right, very good. I thought so. I'll move quickly on just to the remaining items. Uh, the Hospitality and Tourism Management Pro- Program, and, uh, my thanks to the members of the committee who could attend that last Friday. It was great. I had an opportunity to, and, uh, I know Kevin and Kathy were there as well, and a chance to welcome every one of the students in our cohort one. We had, uh, as you know, we had, we had over, over thirty students who applied for the program. Twenty were selected, four students were waitlisted, uh, and the remainder, the remainder of the students, uh, were not accepted to the program. Uh, they came in dressed successfully, you know, to be successful, and shook all their hands on their way in the door. And, uh, wanted to just update, so we, a- as you know, we've been working with the Doubletree as our, as our primary partner. Uh, our additional partner on this is Atlas Travel, and we've shared that as well, and I had an email from Katie Maloney, who's helping us to coordinate this project. So, we're trying to keep the momentum here because the students really don't start the program until the start of school in two thousand fourteen, and they're admitted to the program now. And we're designing their schedules as part of this program of studies and so forth for the remaining months, but to keep the kids motivated between now and the start of school and really excited about this. So, we have some great, uh, field trips lined up, um, we've, for, through, uh, through Atlas Travel. One may be having a, a sort of behind the scenes, uh, tour at Logan Airport to see all of the, um, the work that happens in that, in the hospitality industry there, uh, the cruise ships that come out of Boston, uh, to actually see that industry as well. So, for the kids who are in the program who've committed to this, they're really in for an exciting journey. So, I want to thank the committee again for, for your support, uh, of this project, and I'm really excited to, uh, to see taking off the application. The chapter seventy-four application is well underway, just about finished with that. Uh, it is due in April. Uh, so I'll be submitting that well ahead of time. And again, if approved, and that approval process could happen before the start of next school year or could happen during next school year, uh, once approved, the town would be then eligible for chapter seventy-four funds in addition to chapter seventy money that we get, which would now be a revenue stream. Um, I, I, I don't know the exact number on that. I, I remember that it's been out there that I've heard is around five thousand dollars, give or take. So, twenty kids in a program could get a hundred thousand dollars in revenue back to the town for doing nothing more than giving an opportunity to a cohort of students. In every cohort of twenty, we add that additional five thousand onto the price tag. Again, that number is, is a rough number. I, I don't have a.
Probably a per student.
Per student.
Not just a some grant. It's a per student program.
Not a per student. Yeah, that's correct. Uh, and it doesn't, and it requires, again, it requires a, a sign off by the regional vocational school superintendent, Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick. And he and I, of course, talked from the beginning, from day one, where this program really is an offset to the culinary arts program, which falls under the hospitality industry that's offered at BBT. Only this program in Milford now is everything else in the industry that's not culinary. Uh, so it really is a very broad, uh, broad net of opportunities for our kids. So, uh, I'll, I'll report back, and at some point we'll have students who are in the program come back and report to you. It's always best to hear it from the students themselves and their own experience.
Bob, if I could touch on that, the last time we met, we talked about, or I should say, I spoke about how it's a worldwide program once it graduate from school. A very good friend of mine's daughter graduated from Johnson and Wales. She's out in, um, Arizona right now, training for this European hotel chain. And her job will be, she's going to Europe to recruit people for hospitality management to come back to the United States. They can't find enough people for these, these resorts that they, they, they have, that they're planning on building. And they said the demand for these, um, students or the, or these employees is just so great that they're going to other countries now to bring them to the United States to work in their resorts.
It, it's, it's fan- it is, it's a multi-billion dollar industry. It's, you know, it's amazing how many, uh, when you think about your own travel experiences, how much of that is the hospitality industry along the way. It's just, uh, incredible opportunity for our kids. Uh, we had Johnson and Wales Admissions Office in attendance on that Friday morning. Uh, so you can bet if a student wanted to pursue Johnson and Wales, and they're well in tune with Milford's program, they're going to have a leg up as an, as an applicant to that university, uh, as well as any other school that has a hospitality, uh, program. It's one of a kind and, uh, just thrilled about that taking off. The, uh, the workforce program update, just to give you, uh, this is one of the goals you may recall, and this is where I'll be looking to the school committee to be, uh, this spring, uh, to engage with me on a, on a one-day venture with our students to help them with basic workforce readiness skills, interviewing techniques, um, you know, how to submit a resume, how to dress, you know, any number of topics. I've, I've crafted a, an, a, an agenda for the day. The date has not been set yet. I reached out actually to, uh, to Kevin Mean at Imperial, um, and asked him to be, uh, it seems like everyone reaches out to Kevin for money. You know, he's such a generous man. I reached out to him for his time to come out and be a keynote speaker for us, um, to, to really motivate students about being entrepreneurial and, and being a good community partner and being a businessman. And I think he'd be a great keynote. So, I, I know he's been awfully busy, especially, I can't imagine how many cars he's had to clear off the snow in the parking. Took me, took me half.
He didn't have to do any of this.
Well, I'm not sure he's Mike. I think Mike was out clearing cars. Saw him out there with us.
I think I saw you out cleaning up, yeah. So, I, I'm sure I'll hear back from, uh, from Mr. Mean, but, uh, that, that, more, more will come on that program. The, um, this is, will be news to you. This is not among my goals, although it's something I've been thinking of for some time and, and, and opportunity has come, uh, to us. Uh, Bob McGuire, who serves as a longtime superintendent of schools in Medfield, uh, left Medfield Schools and works for, um, an organization called the Cambridge Institute. And the Cambridge Institute, um, handles basically international exchanges. Milford, along with about, uh, nine or so other communities in Massachusetts, has been invited to participate in, uh, a relationship with China. And this is an opportunity for students from China to come to the United States to study for one year. It's a tuition-based program. The Cambridge Institute handles the, uh, all of the, uh, all of the sort of bureaucracy of this. The, the visas, the, um, the tutoring if a child were to need tutoring while they're here. These are, are going to be, you know, essentially fluent English speakers, uh, high achieving students who want to have a leg up in their, you know, to separate them in their own world, uh, in China to come here. Um, we would charge a tuition of thirteen thousand dollars per student for one year. Um, we could accommodate, uh, we're looking to somewhere, a range between five and ten students, uh, not more than that in a year. Uh, and the reason why I think this is important for Milford, um, for, well, the, the number of reasons why. One is that, um, One is that um we do some exchanges already uh with Italy, with France, with Spain. Uh, this would expand that exchange opportunity for Milford. Uh, right now it's intended to be a one-way exchange, this is just Chinese students coming here, the experiential uh learning opportunity for them. In addition to that global exposure, it also will help offset some of our um our revenue shortfall in school choice. So, our school choice numbers are down for um, obviously Woodland School, for example, there's just not room there for our own kids, never mind adding kids to the to the school. Uh, so at a tune of thirteen thousand dollars, uh, you know, again, it's not, it's not driven intentionally by money, but the 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 benefit is it would offset the school choice declining numbers. Uh, so thirteen students, do a quick math, you know, you'd have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh in revenue for thirteen, you know, for ten students coming in in year one. Couple that with the Chapter seventy-four bump, and we might get closer to our declining Chapter, uh, declining um school choice numbers. So, that's uh in part of the reason. Um, but I don't wanna miss the point here that Milford was selected, it was only we went shopping for this one, we're selected uh for a number of reasons. And uh Bob McGuire will be happy in the future to come to to a meeting and and present more about the program. We're gonna kick this off uh in March, actually, with an experiential opportunity for a small group coming in uh from China for just uh about a week. And we'd be staying with Milford families to get a sense a sense of our culture. Um, it's not as simple as it once was, and school districts may not be um compliant with the law, but Homeland Security is pretty tight on this process. So, we've we've actually just completed our um SEVIS application, this is through Homeland Security. Homeland Security came out, met with me, did a full uh investigation, if you will, to make sure that Milford High School is a legitimate high school. Uh, so that we're, and it's important because people may sign up for, as you can recall, back with, you know, in September eleventh is uh, you know, um, it was just just yesterday. And the world changed at that point for a lot of reasons, and so schools who accept and exchange students without going through this this process are not doing so in compliance with the law. So, Milford uh has submitted the application, we've gone through the review process, and so will be fully compliant with uh with Homeland Security in in this venture. So, I wanted to just give the committee an update on that, it's not something that I I set out to do this year as a goal, it's something that's sort of happened upon the district. And uh I think it's in our best interest to move forward with that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Would those students be in host families, like the exchange students we have now are here for a couple of weeks?
That's right.
But this is a a year-long commitment, so.
And the the families would be paid.
So, so the student stays with the host family for the entire year.
That's correct, yeah, on the on the the user end of this, so the Chinese family, for example, it would probably cost them about fifty to sixty thousand US dollars to send their child here for a year. That's the reality of the cost.
Okay.
Because of the tutoring, so there's no, if a if a student were to come here and their English skills weren't uh where they needed to be, 'cause um we wouldn't be obligated to provide tutoring for them. The Cambridge Institute provides the instructors at their cost.
Right.
So.
And and they would work with the host dining, the host families and all of that?
Yeah, screening, they do all the screenings of that, and they they're working across the country. So, um, they've just now expanded to Massachusetts, and uh we were selected as one of the communities to to jump on board.
So, just so I'm clear, we would send our students there, we would also be receiving students, is that correct?
Uh, right now it's just.
Just us going there?
No, it's just there, going here.
Oh, it's just them coming here, okay, that's why I wanna just clarify as well.
We'll explore the uh that side of sending our kids there as well, um, but we'll start it with the this Chinese students coming here.
Just on a on a on a quick note on that, um, I, first off, I think it's a great opportunity if we have the opportunity to do that. Both from being a student, um, growing up, I actually had a student who was actually part of my graduating class who was here from China. And she actually came over, she was supposed to be only here for one year, she actually ended up reapplying to the program. She actually went from freshman year all the way and graduated high school. Turned out a few years later, actually, after she graduated high school, her sister was sent over and my parents was actually, were actually the host family for her for one year, so.
No kidding.
Uh, it is a tremendous, we actually, somebody we're still in touch, we actually are, graduating classes actually still in touch with. Now have, we've actually had classmates that have gone over and explored and spent time over in China as well. So, it's really done a great job sort of culturally mixing the two countries.
That's great.
Getting exposure to a culture that candidly is 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 not a well-represented culture in the town of Milford. So, uh, I think it's a tremendous opportunity if we're able to explore that and certainly support that. Um, I think it's great for the students who come in, I think it's great for the students who are able to build a relationship with the people that are with the students that are coming over, so it, and that was just one. So, with ten, I can only imagine, that's great.
Thanks, and I'm sure you'll have more questions as we go, and I'll do my best to answer them, and I think having Bob McGuire come in and do a presentation will, you know, allay any concerns that you might have. He's been doing this for some time and is established and been to China several times, so uh brokering these kinds of agreements. So, that's just another uh another another feather in Milford's cap, right, for expanding global opportunities for kids, very happy about that. And then my final uh bullet uh is on the, is the Subcommittee on Educator Evaluation. Um, I'm not sure how many people, how many people who are on the committee currently were involved with negotiations around the educator evaluation instrument. So, you, that 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 may have been sort of on the back uh of your mind, it's been on the front of mind for the last eighteen months. We've been working in a Subcommittee level, so um this, I'll give you an update, there'll be an update, delayed this evening Executive Session about negotiations on the matter. But I wanted to just use the public opportunity to thank the members of the Educator Evaluation Subcommittee for their work. We've had great uh great discussions across, uh, obviously myself representing uh the school committee, uh, along with Lisa Burns, Nancy Angelini. Uh, Kathy's been on some of the meetings, Kevin's been on a few of the meetings as well. Um, but we've come to a point with the educator evaluation where we had to really look at what the state's guidelines have changed and what's the best practice for for Milford. And we've really reached some some agreement uh in areas that other towns still struggle with, so, um, very, very pleased about that. So, I'll give you more updates about the actual impact negotiations, which I can't do publicly because it would impact our ability to bargain effectively. I'll do that in Executive Session later this evening. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Good, thank you, Bob.
Thanks.
Um, next up, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent Business and Human Resources, Kathy.
I have for the committee this evening, six warrants for your approval. The first warrant is in the amount of two hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Christine, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion from Joe, second from Mike, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
Uh, Mike, there is one warrant that you cannot approve.
Yes, right here.
Yeah.
Christine, what is the amount?
That's the first one, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, the first one, red.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you need to do a re-vote?
What, is that the V?
You gotta resend the vote.
The V, is it, yeah.
So, Mike.
We need to resend and recast the vote.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to resend the vote from Christine, second from Scott, all in favor. Okay.
I do have a warrant in the amount of two hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion from Christine, second from Joe, all in favor, all in favor, one abstention.
I have a third warrant in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion from Christine, second from Scott, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
A fourth warrant in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion from Mike, second from Joe, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
I have a fifth warrant in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Christine, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
And the last warrant is in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and six cents.
Motion from Mike, second Scott, all in favor, unanimous in favor, thank you, Kathy.
There is a list for the committee's viewing of the latest appointments from our previous meeting, and I do uh require a vote for a jury duty approval for John Chirillo.
It's been a while, hasn't it?
Yeah.
It has been. Courts have been leaving us alone.
I have a motion from Joe, a second from Christine, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
And that's all, thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's all, thank you, Kathy. Next up, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Kevin.
Great, thank you, I have four brief updates for the committee. Um, the first, which is the next phase of um the educator evaluation process, and I've been updating the committee on our progress with this, is the district-determined measures. Um, as a district, at this point, we have identified more than a hundred and thirty district-determined measures. Our next step is to review these measures, set ranges for high, moderate, and low impact on student learning, and connect each educator with at least two measures. I'm currently meeting with several groups of educators in the des- in the district to uh vet these district-determined measure proposals and determine if proposed measures meet program criteria. Um, we'll be ready to submit a list of these measures to the state before the June deadline, so we're right on, we're right on target in terms of our progress. I wanna thank all the teachers, curriculum team leaders, administrators, for their continued hard work to thoughtfully identify appropriate measures of student learning as part of the next phase of educator evaluation. And I and I really am impressed with the amount of effort and thoughtfulness that educators throughout the district have put into this project. Um, the next piece is um the Kindergarten Assessment um Committee that we formed. Um, I've met with a committee of kindergarten teachers representing both Memorial and Brookside, and and actually, most of the kindergarten teachers have at least attended one of these meetings. Um, we've discussed assessment broadly at the kindergarten level, and we've examined a few pretty specific issues. Um, one one example of the work that this committee has done is there was a concepts of print assessment, that really is kind of like a pre-reading assessment for students. And they, the kindergarten teachers didn't feel like it met their targeted goals for the assessment. So, we did a little bit of research, we came back to the table, um, and came up with a proposal that I think will better meet the needs of the Milford Public Schools. Um, another project that the the School Readiness Committee, as well as the Kindergarten Assessment Committee, will be working on, I wanna pass this around to the um, to the committee, just so they can take a look at, see what I'm talking about. This is on a packet, it's called Teaching Strategies Gold. Which is a new assessment that is connected to the full-day kindergarten grant that we received a couple of years ago. And every community that accepts this grant is required to select one of a number of um assessments that have kinda dropped down to one assessment. We have a choice of one at this point, which is the uh Teaching Strategies Gold, which I believe will be, the writings on the wall, all kindergarten classrooms across the state eventually will be using this this assessment. Um, one of the things that we're really looking at is um how to roll the assessment out, and there's a few options right now. And I'll probably come back to the committee and say, this is, this is the committee's recommendation to the school committee, this is the assessment committee's recommendation to the school committee. One possibility is to do a partial pilot during the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, um, a full pilot during the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year. Or based on more information we're collecting from the state, we may do full implementation either next year or during the fifteen sixteen school year. So, those are kind of the options, but it.
When you're done, I'm trying to understand what this assessment is for, is it for our kids before they go to kindergarten?
So, it's it's actually during the process.
Is it during their kindergarten experience?
Let me give you, let me give you just kind of a quick overview. Um, again, the assessment is Teaching Strategies Gold, it's an observation-based assessment system, so it's very different from like MCAS or PARC, where students were sitting down for a few sessions over the course of the school year. This is kind of an ongoing assessment process.
For each student.
For each student, so they may be looking at a specific skill related to literacy, or numeracy, or pre-literacy, or pre-numeracy type skills. And this would, this would happen throughout the year. One of the things we're talking about connected to this assessment system is, could it potentially um replace the kindergarten report card? Because it has, it's it's kind of like a standards-based process, so it's it's similar to the standards-based report card we're using. And we're, again, we're exploring it at this point, but rather than duplicate efforts, this may replace the current standards-based report card at the kindergarten level. That's one of the things that are on the table that we're discussing.
All right, thank you for that.
All right.
We're kind of on the hook to do this, though, right?
We 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 are, it's just the question of when and how, you know, kind of how much and how soon is really what we're looking at. I'll be attending a meeting, I think, in either late March or early April, um, it's a kind of a statewide meeting around the grant piece, the um, and the the assessment piece.
So, is the state candid, Kevin?
Because we're full day through the grant.
It's it's connected to the grant, but based on what we're hearing, maybe not in the next couple of years, but within probably five or six years. This assessment or a very similar assessment, maybe like Teaching Goals Strategies two point oh will probably be what's going to be required in most 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 kindergarten classrooms across the state.
State saying, if you take our money, you can play by our rules. So, so a trial, you're saying, wouldn't start until the fall?
Yeah, teachers are, teachers are engaging with the materials right now, and I think they're they're using it in a couple spaces in the in the classroom because of some appropriate connections. But I think in terms of a pilot or rollout, we'd be looking at um next school year.
So, just so I'm clear, so you're talking about the thirteen, the fourteen fifteen school year?
Fourteen fifteen school year, possibly fifteen sixteen, depending on which cohort we fall into.
Yeah, so I I guess one of my questions and one of my concerns would just be, as we kinda rolled this out, and I realize that ultimately, like I said, the state's gonna save, if they're gonna take my money, you're gonna play by my rules, but I got it. That sounds like it's still pretty far out. I guess my concern is, are we adding too much onto the plates, and I think we're still, we'll be yet another year into the teacher evaluation process? Are we now adding yet another moving piece to it, I think about, and I realize that it's not all in the same place, but with the teachers, with the teachers, are we adding PARC? We still have MCAS, we're sort of building this ship and flying it at the same time, plus an evaluation.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, and we're, we've got the teacher evaluation process, which we're still kinda going through a lot of growing pains on.
Yep.
Are we sort of unnecessarily so early, is it makes sense maybe even just to defer maybe one extra year to give them just one more year? Hey, let's have one more year with the teacher assessment before we roll this out.
If if that's a possibility, and that's what we're trying to, that's what we'll determine this spring, what our obligation is and kinda where we fall in terms of which cohort we fall under in terms of implementation. Um, it kinda ties nicely into the district-determined measures, 'cause this could in fact become a district-determined measure for the kindergarten teachers. The other piece is there's no PARC or MCAS at the kindergarten level, so this would be.
Yeah.
I think this is the the state's, you know, the good people of the state's way of saying, just sharing, sharing that pain with everybody.
Congratulations, welcome to the paint, got it, all right, no, and I understand that PARC and and MCAS are not at the kindergarten level, but I just, I I wanna be cognizant of the fact that.
It's a good. No, 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 but connected with everything else.
We've asked a lot of our teachers, we ask a lot of them in general, and they always rise to the task. Are we sort of proactively adding more work just 'cause we can?
I actually asked Kevin, what's the penalty if we don't do it?
Right, yeah, I think that's a good point.
And then we're looking at, we're looking at all those pieces, and I think we've got the group of kindergarten teachers.
If it's having my dogs, it's a little bit too big.
No, like I said.
It's a comprehensive assessment of kindergarten, which is hard to assess as it is, so anyone can make that better.
No, I got it, I just.
Yeah, and and it's and it's, it's observational, I will say that we did look at the two or three versions um that the state was offering when there was kind of a choice. And the kindergarten teachers overwhelmingly felt like this was the best choice, so we actually concurred with the state in terms of the assessment choice.
And it may not, I just, it's something that.
Yeah.
What's the impact here and?
Well, they should know, they're in the classroom.
A- absolutely, and that's why they've been an integral part of part of this process, and I and it, and their feedback has been great, and we're working together to try to, we, I look at it as we're all in this together, kinda moving the process forward.
It's encouraging to see that somebody's asking them for their input.
Yeah, well, it's it's, and it's a great, it's a great group of teachers.
Yeah.
I gotta say, they're a great group of teachers. So, I just wanted you to have a peek at that, just so you have a sense of what we're talking about as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next is the PARC pilot update, and I'm I'm, anything new with PARC, I'm trying to give the committee updates on as we kinda move forward. Um, in the spring, again, and I and I've brought this to you before, we're piloting PARC tests at grades three, four, six, seven, eight, and nine. Um, this will impact students in thirteen classrooms across the district. Um, parents and guardians either have received or will receive letters from their school if they were selected to be part of the pilot.
My daughter's in one.
All right, we've got a winner.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, they're like, what is this? They didn't know what was happening, just go do your best.
Uh, we're including PARC information as part of the Woodland MCAS, um, night they do a night because it's the first time at third grade, students take the MCAS. I'm gonna do a piece on PARC and what parents will expect kinda moving forward. We'll probably do a little more across the district next year in terms of outreach. Um, and I think we want the, again, we want the uh, the sightlines to be a little clearer too, because there's still some things that are a little bit up in the air. Right now, um, we're looking to go paper and pencil for the next couple of years, just 'cause we don't have the capacity, which is not atypical of any district in Massachusetts or across the country, to mass test every student in the district using um like online or computer-based testing. Um, we will be, we will be piloting computer-based testing at the high school as part of the field tests this year.
That's exciting, that's great.
Yeah, so, I mean, in terms of, we've successfully uploaded and downloaded information, uploaded information from the state and downloaded it to the um, to the testing vendor. Um, which is good because it's much easier to do with thirteen classrooms than potentially next year when we're, we're talking every classroom from third grade to uh to eighth grade next year.
And and did you tell us previously for that pilot, we're not gonna get test scores returned, is that right?
We will not receive, correct, that's correct, we will not receive any feedback from the state, so they're not gonna give us individual student data, so parents aren't gonna receive any information on how their students perform.
Right, that's the weird part about it.
Yeah, I I I know, I mean.
You like go through the process, you're a pilot, but you don't get any feedback, not even individually, but as a district, like what's the need?
Right.
So, yeah, schools, districts aren't, we're probably gonna get some kind of information back from the state, I would assume, in terms of
Oh, yeah.
how the pilot went, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna get kind of the reports like we did it with MCAS.
Right.
And then I just wanted to just give you just a quick list of second half of the year priorities from my perspective, just things that I'm working on, so you're aware of some things that are happening in terms of curriculum and instruction. And I'll probably do a more comprehensive report. And I'll probably do a more comprehensive report, maybe at the next meeting or the following meeting, just this, this agenda seemed pretty, pretty heavy tonight. Um, again, we're gonna continue the district determined measures work across the district. We're continuing the data teamwork. Um, we're beginning to look at questions specific to grade levels in schools. Um, schools are starting to s- um, begin mini-action research projects to look at questions that are pertinent to some, some trends they've seen in the data. Um, we're looking to review assessments by grade level, similar to the work we did with the, with the kindergarten group. Um, you know, I've done some work with the folks in the middle school with math. And a couple of other areas and we're starting to draw that work out. Um, we're also looking to review the standards-based report cards to, to ensure that there's both horizontal and vertical consistency with ratings. And that the report cards reflect current and future assessment practices. Because of the district determined measures initiative, some of the assessments are shifting. And that needs to be reflected in the report cards. Uh, curriculum alignment and Common Core alignment is gonna be an ongoing process, probably for the next five years, to be honest with you. As we get the PARK tests underway, we're gonna, we're gonna gain new information from that process as we move forward. Um, writing across content areas, under Common Core, the expectation is that every teacher is a teacher of literacy, which includes reading and writing. And we're, we're just, we're just trying to make sure that in every classroom at every grade level, we're making those kind of connections. Uh, increasing the rigor. Uh, we're looking at question types and writing prompts. The expectations for writing and responding to questions are not only changing, but also increasing. And I've talked about this be- before, um, we wanna ensure that our curriculum assessment reflects the rigor and ensure students are engaging in all aspects and expectations of the Common Core curriculum. We, we have phased this in since the new standards were put in place in two thousand and ten, but we're really starting to look at what some of those expectations are and making sure that that's happening. On a, you know, kind of a living, breathing, daily basis in the classrooms across the district. Again, consistently with that is looking at frameworks and rubrics for writing. We wanna make sure that we're developing a common language around writing across the district. So as, as students are moving classroom to classroom and grade to grade, we're kind of expecting similar things and, and using similar rubrics. So they're gonna get more and more complex as the students move from the elementary schools to the secondary schools, but we wanna make sure that language is starting to become consistent. Um, technology integration, um, I think it's a reflection of the world we live in, but also, um, I think the PARK tests are going to push us as well as districts across the country. Um, towards greater technology integration, which I think is a very positive thing. And then just generally looking at math alignment and again, connected to the Common Core and then transitions between grade levels and schools, just to make sure that students are. Meeting their grade level, um, expectations, which I believe they are, but it's shifting grade to grade, classroom to classroom, school to school. So there's consistency across the district with, with the mathematics program as well. So that's kind of the, the short and dirty version of the priorities for the next half of the year.
Thank you, Kevin.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. I was a little upset when I walked in and didn't see your powerful presentation.
Mike, I'm feeling you. I'm feeling you, Mike.
I get ready for that every, every Thursday night, I saw, boy.
Every Thursday, I only go four, two twice a month. That's great.
Great. Um, next up, we have new business. Do any members have any new business? You know, do any members have any old business?
Just one item, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I know we've, we've sort of discussed it, um, I think Donnie brought it up at one point, I think a couple of us have brought it up. Uh, do we have an update on uh, where we are with our cell phone policies?
Um, Melissa sent the invitation to you and to Christine.
Yeah, she sent this. She sent some emails last week.
Oh, good.
Okay, I made.
Or maybe, just double check your email.
Probably, I'll just have to double check my email, okay.
Yeah.
I thought we started the, we, well, I wanna do this to, instead of bringing it here, start first with the policies committee.
Yep, with the Subcommittee, that's fine, that's why, that's why I wanna make sure, okay. I'll have to double check my email, cause I just.
That's right, go check email last week.
I'll, I'll ask one to the follow-up.
Yeah, sometimes hers gets stuck in my spam, which is why I may not have seen it.
Yeah, well, invite, uh, we're gonna invite the high school prin- the high school administration to have a discussion and be part of it and think through what's out there and some good options before we come back to the committee on that, so.
Excellent. Perfect.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, as a possible Subcommittee, that's perfect. I'll double check it, thank you.
Yeah, be- because Carrie did start reaching out to some other districts, inquiring as to what they're doing and.
Oh, she did. Yeah, she has information collected.
Oh, good, I'm anxious to hear about that too.
Yeah.
I, you know, I had to hear again the other day, there were kids fighting over a plug, cause they needed to charge the phone. This was in the classroom, so again, I went crazy over that, so I was glad you brought that up.
I think it's crazy, yeah, I think it's crazy.
Yeah. My, my eighth grader come home and said, well, all the kids have this, have their phones in school. I said, I hope not, cause I know in the middle school, they're not, it's gotta stay in their locker, so. But I actually, some teachers approached me, um, actually at the, at the play, and a funny thing happened the way of the forum that, uh, was conducted here a couple of weeks ago. And uh, some of the teachers said, yeah, this, some of the teachers actually have, have, it's interesting to see the creativity of our educators and how they, how they approach it. One of the ways they actually did it was, when the teachers actually went around and bought, um, uh, the, the power plugs, basically the six plugs.
Surge plug.
The surge protectors. Um, and basically said, alright, six plugs, you guys wanna plug it in, you guys can plug them all in here. He can guarantee you he's not playing on their phones while he's trying to teach, because he's getting them to charge the phones. They all wanna charge them, he said, fine, but I know you can't use your phone when you're in the room, cause they're all sitting over on the side. So it's creative how we, how some of them have addressed it. Not necessarily that's the policy I wanna adopt, but uh, it's interesting to see the creativity, uh, you know, so I, I, I look forward to going to that meeting as a policy Subcommittee. Another fun one for you and I to tackle Christine. So we'll make sure we get that one banged out before April.
Yeah, yeah, I, I look forward to that, uh, because um, a- again, it's gonna be the enforcement, I think, by the teachers and the administrators, um.
Yeah, I agree. We'll give them the air cover with the policy to be able to enforce it and make sure that we, we make it come to life for them, so.
Yeah, you have to give them something they can enforce, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right, no, agreed, yeah.
That's all.
Any other members? Okay, uh, we do have an executive session this evening, um, with some contract negotiations that we could not otherwise discuss in open meeting. So that does require a roll call.
Yes.
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 Great. We will not be returning into open session. Thank you.